Pray. While we've come to a tough week here in our town, our county, we just thank you for your grace and mercy that helps us pull through through these terrible situations. We thank you for our officer, the service that he gave to our community. We shall always remember his dedication and every officer that puts their lives on the line for our protection. We just thank you for them and protect them. Oh, we thank you for this privilege of serving our community. We thank you for the progress we're making. We thank you for the leadership of our town and our community. We just pray that your wisdom will always be a part of the decisions that we make in our in our body here. Thank you for each member who sacrifices their time and efforts to serve our community and may all be said and done to today and tonight in your will in Jesus's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody's had time to look at your amendments from the last meeting. I just need a motion to approve those amendments, please.
Motion made.
A favor.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay, first thing we have tonight on our agenda is our ordinance twenty twenty-four dot oh oh five at roaring tax tower. This is to do with our property tax.
The ordinance is likely to impose an adblocker of taxes from the city of Jamestown to general municipal purposes for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five on all taxable property within the taxing jurisdiction of Jamestown. Whereas it does serve the city of Jamestown Kentucky to impose adblocker of taxes on real personal property for the purpose of providing revenue necessary for the support of operation of the government of the city of Jamestown. Whereas the city council of the city of Jamestown Kentucky is required by state law to establish a tax rate under guidelines regarding payment of taxes. Therefore, we are to rename the city council of the city of Jamestown, Kentucky as follows. For the purposes of supporting the operation of government of the city of Jamestown, Kentucky and the payment of debts and expenses incurred by the city of Jamestown, Kentucky for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, there shall be a hereby limited imposed adblocker of taxes on each one hundred dollars of assessed taxable property within the taxing jurisdiction of the city of Jamestown. Real property, including real property of public service companies, shall be taxed at thirteen point seven cents per hundred assessed value determined by Department of Revenue Assess Valuation. First property, including first property of public service companies, shall be taxed at thirteen point seven cents per hundred of assessed value determined by Department of Revenue Assess Valuation. Financial institutions measured by the deposit in the institution located within the jurisdiction of the city of Jamestown shall be taxed at point zero two five percent of all deposits per car S one thirty-six point five seven five subsection two. All taxes paid on or before December thirty-first shall receive a discount of two percent of the total face value. All taxes paid after January third first twenty twenty-five will incur a penalty of ten percent of additional tax payable. All persons who firm owing twenty twenty-four property taxes which require to be published to the local newspaper as the link of taxes for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five shall be an additional to the tax over to the ten percent penalty of three dollars to cover the cost of the newspaper publication. This order shall become effective upon the passage of publication of our.
So I think this is gonna lower our taxes a little bit.
Yeah, it's it's down. It's from fourteen two to thirteen seven.
So no, no.
One base.
Down from fourteen to thirteen seven, so that's good.
Good thing.
So that's just our first reading and we'll have to have a second reading on that. I really don't have what going on.
I bet something we kind of we kind of let go of the wayside here a little bit. We've we've stopped looking at it at expanding our park. I think that's something we need to kind of take up takes on a little bit, maybe start looking at and what we can do.
Whatever did anything ever come up about the property that was around there? Cause without that property, do we have any ways of expanding the park without being able to pick up that property?
Well, there is. I've not talked to him, but for a while, I've not called him for a while. I can, I can call him back and then in case there's there's routes that we can take if yeah, but that's that's just, I just feel like we ever started looking into possibilities of things, you know?
And and I'm more than glad to look at, you know, I think we need to do that, but I just don't know what options we have without being able to pick up that.
I can I can call him again. He just lives in Delaware and I can call him again and see where they where they're at, where they're at.
But that's been the whole, that's the whole time. It's not being able to reach some kind of where we, you know?
But I I will make sure to to do that in Carol's blessing.
I say checking good as far as everybody's.
I think it's a good thing, man. If we could try what you've been talking about way up to the other corner toward we could actually expand. I mean, that would give us a lot of different possibilities.
We need.
Is it ever?
I feel like we have to rush.
That's.
So we're probably first I got the person on this survey.
If we have.
We have surveyed? Okay. We have a flat.
We'd be on flat, wouldn't we? Or be at forecast. They should have filed that forecast. Did survey ever file?
Yeah.
Of the of the.
Yeah.
Really?
See, we had we had park survey too.
Okay.
Trying to find the numbers on it.
Awesome.
So that's.
That's a lot of that there, sure.
So, yeah, that's how it's done.
So I don't know how many acres there are. I think there's four, five.
Nine, ten, two, nine. In that particular plot, you know?
Well, why don't you check to see what you can find out and then that gives us somewhere to start.
I can call mine, yeah, I can call mine and see see where they're at now.
I think there's some improvements we can do on the park anyway, you know, right there where right now, just, you know, sometimes it can.
Yeah, there's.
Then we can add or some few things that need work on a little bit, you know, that building and stuff all there, make some work and but, you know, maybe after a season, if it's over then.
Of course, now another thing I'm thinking about too is if the county ends up being able to do their sports park that they're talking about for us, do we really need that much more land?
I would I would think so. I myself, you know, well, we get a lot of people for it.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, were we to discuss before about getting more ball fields?
Yeah.
And if they're gonna do ball fields up there.
And that's kind of, you know, of course, we went to Washington and asked and they put it all in front of the the senate and stuff, but it didn't, we didn't get the grant. That was, so we're asking for a lot of money, which is what they had told us when that house bill first come out to go for big money because it was gonna give lots of money. But they still got revamped and revamped and revamped. The big money wasn't big, so the big enough that we asked for about.
I mean, if it's not on the open there, you'd be well off to try and pursue.
There's still another company that's looking at, we met with them last week, you know, that's looking at some avenues of their input on it, so it's gonna depend, I think, on a lot of things, cause that that bill, that was that house bill nine, but it required federal match money and that's what we asked for from, you know, when Jackie Comer presented the bill was to to try to get the match money so we could apply for the house bill. Started that house bill nine, I think it's now seven twenty-three, but without getting that federal money, you can't apply for that.
But in turn, if you could buy a property there next to the park too.
Let's see where land is basically and.
I mean, that's.
You know, you.
Once, you know, just, I hate to say once in a lifetime, but it's a one time change because like, you know, anybody else purchases it, you never know what's going on.
Legally speaking, I mean, that title or that property might be kind of require a lot of research and to be sure you get everybody who owns an intragen to sign the deed.
Yeah.
If the city is proactive, and I'm not suggesting adversarial thing, that the city is proactive going through the courts, then you have a method of bringing everybody in through through warning order attorneys and otherwise to be sure that that title is perfected. If you get, you know, if you object to it, then you have to come forward. Otherwise, we get a good solid title. If we just, and I say this with love, if we just have somebody sign it over to us, it may not be everybody that needs to sign it.
It's gotta go back through the years.
That's right, and you know, I mean, it's it's it hasn't moved in years over there. It's been the same family and they were just.
Just said, sir.
Even if, even if we had to go through a very voluntary thing, you'd almost want a declaratory judgment recall to be sure that we get good title, because if we borrow money through the feds or somebody like that or get grants, somebody's got to certify that it's a good clean title and that person would be, if I'm still alive and you don't keep me, I'd be the one having to do that, so. Otherwise, there might be a problem in in being sure that it's something that we can go bank on. You know, so.
Yeah, I think that would be probably a big thing at the beginning, is like you say, you get not a complete title on it because of, I think, what we learned from it before was maybe how it was transferred.
Well, we have, you know, we have nursing home issues. We have, I say this, you know, I talk about school, we have nursing home issues. We have who owns the property and might be in dissent, somebody might own issue, part of it that we don't know about. I wouldn't have any idea how to find. But if you're getting to court, then everybody's got to come forward and establish their claim or we get, you know.
How long does it take, sir? How long does it take? How long are we given to establish claim?
Fifty, usually fifty days. You would have a warning order attorney at the point. That would be some lawyer who would say all those having being heirs of H K Cooper, you know, and that would be like adding a paper lady or letterhead people or anything, you know, come forward, search your claim. If you don't do that, then the court gives us a default judgment, you know, and then we and then we take that deed through the master commission, run with it.
And and we take the assessed, no, you?
You you would, you put up, you have the way it works. You would have a good honest appraisal, you know. You take that amount of money and it's imminent domain. The city has the right to, I mean, you don't want to act like we can, but you could just take property if you pay for it for public purpose. You put that money up and you move forward. Then you don't fuss over title, you fuss over the price. You don't fuss over title after you get that all brought together, you just fuss over whether or not we're paying enough for it.
Cause does that going that way, that gives you a clear path?
Yes, it does.
So I think researching it before, I think different people would take the taxes, I mean, wouldn't that wouldn't that?
Well, if they did, yes, and and some, and there's a way of doing that. I mean, am I talking too much?
Yes.
There's a way of doing that. If somebody has a claim or I pay the taxes on it or I bush haul you for twenty years, all those things have to be brought up and that comes off the top of the price and people, persons get reimbursed maybe or maybe not or maybe. And that's paid off the top and then the balance goes to the heirs that the court determines is entitled to. And it's a it's a pretty cut and dry thing in a way, you know, if you if you just do it, take your time. I hope, and I would say that people would agree to do it. And I hope they would, but we all really think a lot of that we still would have like a declaratory judgment, which is, you know, saying or defined that really if they sign over to us is correct. That's how important it is for the city, I think. We don't want to give them less over too on the plot.
If it's good with their money, then I will call him and and see what we can find out.
Be awesome, yeah.
Sounds good.
So you're just gonna do some checking.
I'll come in and see what we're standing up there.
Another thing I can think of is, we're seeing this storm there. Have we figured anything out on her steps yet?
Well, that's what we've talked about. We're actually talking about she's interested in buying the property, right, selling it, so that's what H K is gonna do some, there's so many.
Well, I'm talking about the steps out the front where we're gonna redo the.
It's kind of.
That's part of, yeah, that's kind of part of what we're looking at all of it at once. We're trying to put it, combine it all together and see what we can come up with. So H K though, there is only.
I'm confused.
Well, that.
Cause the sidewalks are us to fix.
That's right. But we're still looking at all of it at the same time, trying to figure out what we're gonna do with the property. If we sell the property, then she'll have some say on how she wants that sidewalk. If we keep it, we're gonna do some, maybe some work on the sidewalk to what we're gonna do with the property, so that's gonna determine how the sidewalk's fixed. But we're gonna.
I missed the discussion some back there.
Well, I mean, that's just the whole.
Yeah, my other thing, I'm just like, I missed that discussion some more.
That's just the where we're at on what you can do and what you can't do.
Well, we actually, I would like just just before just before we opened the meeting, she was gonna speak up in the mayor's comments there. Shelley, you got anything to?
But H K's gotta do some, there's certain reasons, certain reasons how you can sell the property, the way you can sell it, what kind of deal you can.
Oh, yeah, I mean, especially with the.
It's not anything, we just, he's gonna, once he tells us what we can do, then we're gonna do a sale.
I'm just concerned about the sidewalks and the shape, that's what I thought of it.
Right, and and that's why that's part of how we're gonna fix the sidewalks is gonna depend on what happens with that lot. Is, are we gonna do it all at once? In other words, and this is just things that's just come up. It's not even, are we, if we let keep in that lot? What are we gonna do? Are we gonna go in and pour concrete and fix the sidewalk and the concrete all at the same time and fix that up? Or if Shelley's gonna buy the lot, then the sidewalk just needs to be fixed, like sidewalk, and then she does whatever she does with the business. But H K has got to give us what we can do about selling the business. There's so many rules in the book that says depending on what you're selling for, there's gotta be, you can't just sell it surplus property, right, right?
Yeah, surplus can be sold or given per economic development or it has to be surplused out by public auction or civil bids. So, I mean, that's a something, you know, if she's looking to expand her business, put in business or something like that, then we can look at something straight to her or working out some kind of deal with her versus it having to do with both auction or or civil bids to to surplus it out.
Right, and then there may be information that has to be in your deed that backs that up, so there's there's some research that has to be done.
She'd be ready to make the contributions to the city on behalf of traded property to her. If she wants a lot that joins her.
The lot that we bought off of Virginia Grind. She would like to purchase that, but there's only certain ways that the city can sell surplus property.
That's true.
There's certain rules behind what you can do and how it can be sold, what it can be used for and.
That is true.
So that's where we need to tell us what we.
No reason I asked her to tell us. I thought that was what we voted on a month ago was that we were going to get her, get the sidewalk fixed.
Yes.
That's the reason I was asking about that. I wouldn't talk about it.
And we look at all the sidewalks. That's what we actually looking at, cause there's several.
Yeah.
Hers is a priority because if I understand, we're being held up from the state to being able to open until that sidewalk sticks. Is that correct? Correct. So, see, that's a priority. We just, we we need to determine what's gonna happen with that lot. And as soon as H K can get that, we'll get what's going on.
Well, I think we'll probably need some value, you know, the value of the lot, the value of the repair of the side, all that stuff has to be part of the mix before we do we have any prices on anything or a set prices on anything or?
We don't have, we don't have a quote on on the sidewalk.
Well, I think we do, don't we?
I mean, if you're looking to do it somehow.
Huh?
Trade or something.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what we've got to determine, you know, we've got to just get some prices and stuff.
All right, we need to, we need to go ahead and get some quotes on on some prices, estimates.
And when, you know, when they looked at it, I mean, I guess Les has looked at it. He thought that they could do a lot of the work, but you know, how much can they do to you know, to fix it or are we gonna have to have somebody come in and fix it? So that's what we've got. We forgot to have him. Now that mow is over, we're getting close to being over, but if that's something that they can do, then that's something they need to start on. If not, then we need to get some prices to get it fixed. Or get some quotes.
That's what I was getting at, cause I thought last month, that was what we talked about, was getting quotes to get it fixed. That's where I was asking before we were at.
They they looked at it and felt like we could fix it, you know, that they could pour the concrete and stuff and do it, but.
How much are we talking?
It's all down a little bit.
How much are we talking about doing? I'm just like from the alley that goes up behind Real Java down to the end of the sidewalk at the new shop or something, it's maybe kind of stretched or it's a part of.
It's a pretty good area there. It's in bad shape.
Don't they compare it all if you did you do some of it with us?
I think it's gonna have to be wide.
It's gonna have to be wide when they dig one. I mean, you know, as it is right now, it's it's kind of grandpa, you know, but if you start doing work to it, it's gonna have to be wide, maybe eight, one, it's gonna have to have railing, and it's gonna have, it's gonna, it's a lot of work.
So, you know, there's a lot more to this.
Is that gonna take out some parking down through there?
I don't think it would take out parking. I think instead of having to step down the way it is, you widen it all the way out to curb and and run rail, you know, longways. I don't know, has.
Wheelchair ramp.
Yes, yeah, well, on one end anyway, I don't know how, I mean, I'm sure doing it on the other end is 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 possible. I'm not, I would have to get with somebody else on to keep it eighty-eight wide with with with, especially on one side and then the other side. I mean, I don't know. I don't know that, but I know it will have to be widened and have to be railing and, you know, you're, it's easy to rent on one side. It's gonna, you know, it becomes natural ramp that way, but that is a whole lot of work to be done out there to get it suitable for.
Yeah.
For them, for them to turn it up, you know, like, you know.
They know. Some water meters there in the middle of it too?
Those, that's, there's a water meter there, but everything now is kind of, it's coming up back and down.
So those could just be done away with.
Yeah.
Yeah, we looked, we went over and looked at it a couple of weeks ago and it's, I mean, it's it's in bad shape. It's.
It'll it'll have to be definitely a good side, but the step down will have to be wide and then probably all the way up to curb. I don't know, I I can't, I can't put it in my mind how if there's one step there, two, I can't, I can't place it.
There's two, I think.
So I mean, I would say you probably have to go up curb one.
Three, can't step three on the curb.
Yeah. They must have little feedback then, cause they're small.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we need to get with Les and then see what he thinks and then get some estimates and done with it, because she is
Yeah, when they.
Got a business consultant here, you know.
You know, third problem.
And we need to make a decision with her about that lot, so that's all gonna have to come together. So we'll get some quotes and look at what what that's gonna entail and then we'll have to just get back together and see what, and H K will just kind of see what.
Shelley, what's your timeframe?
Time hoping two, about two and a half, three weeks, I mean, I don't know.
I I my ears are full of water.
Three weeks.
Three weeks?
Mm-hmm.
That's gonna be hard to pull off.
We're laying it behind a little bit, yeah.
The reason I brought it up a month ago.
Well, it's more to it than just.
Well, not really, there's nothing there. I hate the dispute, but the sidewalks are ours to maintain.
That's right.
As a city, regardless of whether we sell our property or whether we don't.
Right.
The sidewalks are ours to maintain.
That's right, and we have looked at what we're able to maintain on, but we've also.
Especially for the safety of the public.
We've also had complaints on other areas. It's gotta be fixed up, so.
Not on other areas, I'm talking about that one in particular though, and that was our discussion a month ago, was that we would get quotes on it and we would get it fixed.
Yes, and that's what.
And we're a month later and we still don't even have quotes.
Two weeks ago because the city was gonna try to do it themselves. That's the last one. I'll make the pledge of allegiance if they can do it, if they can fix it.
Well, like you said, mowing, mowing season is.
Getting close to.
Basically, just about done, so that's gonna free up people if the city, if we do it ourselves, if we do it ourselves, then Les needs to plan together.
Do you have a shooting hog and they want to try to open in three weeks?
Well, yeah, no, I told you, we're we're laying it behind there, you know, and but if Les, we can do it, you know, if not, we get some, we can get quotes.
Of course, the people who done the other sidewalks.
Yeah.
You know, that would probably be.
They done it better.
Cause they did a, they did a good job on that.
Yeah, they did do a good job on that, but can we get some quotes at least to see if they're interested in doing it from some local contractors like Steve Williams, David Popwell?
Yeah, Steve Williams is a dreadful leader. They take three years. Yeah, we can get, but here you go, you're, you know, you're on the time branch now and we need to, we need to get some quotes with somebody, I guess, that can get in there and get it done. We're not able to consider doing it. We need to get some quotes and get somebody in there to just say, you need to do it, I guess.
Okay, you can tell, you can tell Les or y'all.
I have Les to call Steve and see where he's at and.
Do some of us need to get some quotes? I'm gonna get some people to look at it or can you get somebody to look at it there?
Y'all.
I mean, do we get somebody to give us some prices too? If Les, if Les says he can do it, I mean, it's, you know.
But now we're talking about it's gotta be compliant. It's, so we're leaning into a whole different thing, what the city can fix and what has to be compliant.
Would you go ahead, approve your odds?
Okay, so if nobody wants, if nobody's gonna get a hold of nobody, I'm gonna have Les to get a hold of everybody. The reason that he knows will get a hold of the people that did the other ones. Anybody hopeful we can get, get a quote and when they can do it.
Sounds good.
And then the rest of it will just work on that.
Sure.
And are they, are you gonna give us a quote for railing too? Not just concrete, but the railing too?
Probably be a whole different company, wouldn't it? Adapt your tracks and do your railing.
They may, they may sleep it. I'm not, I'm not concrete. Not in what they've done in the past, you know, and they they look at like sleeping them and then they find somebody to come in and set it railing, but Slattery will probably do it all, but I don't know that.
That's the group before.
Yeah, but I, like I said, I don't know that. I know people even sleep some stuff for us once. Yeah, but I, like I said, I don't know that, I know people who even sleeved some stuff for us once, um, I, I mean, it worked out fine too, you know, we had, uh, Paco come in and do railing for us, um, but that's, that's just something I'm looking at.
I used to build a lot of railings when I worked in construction, and the sleeving works, but your ten miles better off if you've got it before you.
Yeah, yeah.
Because otherwise you get water down inside of the sleeve and you've got problems later.
We, that, we had issues with that very soon, yeah, where they sleeved it and passed over doors on that side, it gets loose.
It gets loose and it's, it makes a mess, sleeving.
We just get, uh, you know, I don't know, I mean, my thought on that would be just if that guy that done the courthouse is the only one that can do the whole job. Just give him a quote. I mean, if he can do, oh, God, did he do some railings over there beforehand?
Also, to be honest, I swear I'm, I think Willis made those, and I'm not sure if he settled, I'm not sure, but he, I.
Sometimes it can be around the corner.
I'm always gonna be willing to make.
Sometimes it's, yeah, or around, that's your best, that really is, probably a lot better off.
Well, we got a relevant here, so. We're already gonna get something going here pretty quick. Yeah, there's a point there, so, don't let folks always do. I don't know how big a deal that is now, but Giovanni's has moved down because we looked once about getting rid of the sidewalk altogether, just extend the road out and maybe it'd be cheaper. Well, the trucks kept pulling out, Giovanni's has run over the sidewalk and kept busting it up, now, we may not have that issue anymore, you know, since, since we don't have big trucks going to do it now there. That's enough, we need to look at it.
Yeah, cause some of those, you know, if it's midnight, if we could, whoever's doing this, try to look at it on the night. Instead of somebody trying to, you know, um, Marketplace next, this Saturday, you do Saturday? I'll wait, sit up. Twimers, yeah. It's Saturday, it'll be Marketplace, probably try to run that through October.
I think so, unless it gets to October, which October should be fun, sometimes November's good.
Yeah, we'll just see what the weather is.
With a sweater.
That's the best time. Uh, luck with the weather.
Shelley, you have anything that you want to add, or?
Uh, actually, yeah, Les approached me, um, maybe a month ago about the Rogers building, and we're under contract, but that is, uh, it's not looking too good, they haven't fulfilled everything in the due diligence. So, the, that's owned by an investor out of state, uh, in Minneapolis, and, uh, so that's probably gonna be coming back on the market, and he is very antsy to sell, and I think it could be bought, uh, agreed to price.
Okay, that's good enough.
Actually knows something in two weeks, that's, uh, his timeframe's up in two weeks, so.
Okay. We just let this know, how about? Okay. Any, have you anything else?
Yeah, I was, I seem to be disturbed enough.
Oh, wow.
Uh, listen, I had asked Tyler, I think he can, or ask you about us and cannabis ordinance, and he had sent me back that you wanted to wait until October. I just don't wanna see us get in a situation like we did the last time, where the, anybody that would be looking at us doesn't have time like that one guy was talking about, it, it takes a while for them to find their property, get their drawings, get everything ready. So, I'm gonna make a motion, we do a second reading on our cannabis ordinance, because we've already discussed that we can change it at any time, or we can modify it as needed, but I hate for us to take a chance on missing out on something like that.
So, are you wanting to do a second reading on the ordinance as it stands?
As it stands, what we read the first time is.
We'll have to look at that, so we can't do that tonight, without it being on the agenda.
Yeah, we've already had, I mean, that's a, that's a regular meeting, so, if you can do it, I mean, well, we've got a motion for a second reading, so you need a second note on it, then we can do it.
Okay, I'll follow that, yeah.
And if there's, it's a special call, I mean.
All right, I need a motion.
Got a motion.
And I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So.
Is that all us?
Is that all us?
I have to figure out the time of that, we have to read it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's just a motion to be done.
Uh, I'm assuming that is all us. I know, my head is down there. This is a second reading, order twenty twenty four zero zero four, an order to authorize all cannabis business operations in the city of Jamestown. Whereas on March thirty first twenty twenty three, the governor signed into law Senate Bill forty seven, which established license regulation of the cultivation, processing, sale, distribution of abusive marijuana-related activities for medicinal purposes. Whereas the act authorizes the cabinet for health and family services to issue licenses of the following businesses. Tier one cannabis cultivator, tier two cannabis cultivator, tier three cannabis cultivator, tier four cannabis cultivator, cannabis dispensary, cannabis processor, cannabis producer, or cannabis safety compliance facility. KRS two eighteen B one thirty authorized all local companies to authorize agreements and submit to the vote of question of cannabis business operations within its territory. And whereas the Commonwealth of Kentucky legalized medicinal cannabis to provide qualified patients with severe medical disorders to utilize medicinal cannabis under the doctor's care. It is necessary and appropriate and in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the city of Jamestown's residents and members of the public who visit, travel, conduct business in the city of Jamestown to authorize all cannabis business within the geographic boundaries of the city of Jamestown. City of Jamestown wishes to utilize the authority granted by KRS two eighteen B one thirty. Definition's cabinet means cabinet of health and family services, cannabis business, means that entity licensed under the chapter as a cultivator, dispensary, processor, producer, or safety compliance facility. Cultivator means the entity licensed such as under KRS two eighteen B one oh eight oh, two eighteen B oh eight five, and two eighteen B oh nine oh. Dispensary means entitled entity licensed as such under KRS two eighteen B oh eight oh, two eighteen B oh eight five, and two eighteen B oh nine oh. Medicinal cannabis means cannabis found under KRS two eighteen eight point oh one oh. When cultivated, processed, produced, transported, dispensed, distributed, sold, possessed, and used in accordance with this chapter. Includes medicinal cannabis products and raw plant material, and does not include industrial hemp or industrial hemp products as defined in KRS two six oh point eight five oh, processor means entity licensed such under KRS two eighteen B oh eight oh, two eighteen B oh eight five, and two eighteen B oh nine oh. Producer means entity licensed as such under KRS two eighteen B oh eight oh, two eighteen B oh eight five, and two eighteen B point oh nine oh. Safety compliance facility, which means entity licensed under such KRS two eighteen B oh eight oh, two eighteen B oh eight five, two eighteen B oh nine oh. All cannabis business is hereby authorized to operate in the city limits of Jamestown. Cannabis business means the entity licensed under chapter two eighteen B of the Kentucky Revival Statute as a cultivator, dispensary, processor, producer, and safety compliance facility. This ordinance shall be effective immediately upon its enactment by the city of Jamestown on the certain reading publication in accordance with the fire disciple by Kentucky law. That's a lot better re-gradated, H.
Very good job. He's in run out of wind there. You don't have.
It's getting rough. I've got a question on this, um, as of right now, medical marijuana is the only thing permitted. If we approve this and then a year or two from now the state opens it up to recreational marijuana, is that opening us up to? I don't think so, because I'll have to announce another statute for that form of sale. Who I might guess would be, they'll require us, I don't know that they will, but they would probably just require us to do it, approve it locally like they do this.
And on top of that, we can always do an ordinance, modify that ordinance against that too.
We could, yeah, but we don't know what the, what, like Tony's saying, what the statute would be around the recreational.
But I mean, you can always change all of it to need that.
Yes, yes.
That's my concept, I'm.
Yeah, but it's hard to, you know, it's, it's hard to change an ordinance if somebody's been coming in and made a big investment in a property, you know.
Well, what I'm saying is, as far as recreational, you, you would have nothing vast notice that you could change ordinance where it was against any recreational.
I think the gentleman that, that, uh, was here, I forget his name, I think that was, he insinuated that.
Yeah, he was insinuating, he was more interested in that aspect, but what got me with him, the gentleman that was here. He was more interested in us giving him a mouthful on the place.
Yeah.
And I, that really kinda, I'm a little iffy about a lot of the information he gave, yeah.
But if you pass that ordinance, it's not you, nobody, and it says anybody.
Right.
Anybody can.
And I think we're better off.
Whatever he was asking, that has nothing to do with who can do it, cause the ordinance says anybody.
And I think we're better off with it that way. He made the comment, oh, he was all about competition, but he, he didn't want competition either, that's kinda what got me about him. He's talking on both sides, his mouth is all second.
That was not a good presentation.
No, it wasn't, I mean, it, there are really.
It was more him selling his company than it was about anything else.
But I think that the legislature is pretty conservative, they probably will say, okay, this is medical, if you're gonna do recreational, this is what you have to do. We don't have to do any of that, of course, to that, but, uh, I think it's coming, guys, I think that's the next step.
But that could be a year down the road, two years, ten years.
Yes, sir.
Whatever, you know, I mean, it could be, I'll make a motion, we accept the ordinance as we're here.
Got a motion by Dwight to accept the ordinance, I need a second.
Second.
Second, go again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, so, anything else? Dwight?
I'm done.
Movie.
My stick broke.
We're, we're gonna do this, this stuff tomorrow.
Movie's in the car, we're on.
That's, we need to decide if we wanna do a movie night or if we wanna do a band night.
Whatever happened with the deal now to the.
We're probably running out of the weather.
Well, yeah, what kind of, you know, with the kids movies, it was not a thought, we're getting dark, so it was funny. Kids movie because it was so fast this time, it's definitely you wanna start kids movies back, uh, because it's seven o'clock, we're getting that dark enough.
Be over the night.
What happened with the battle of the batteries that you were looking at a few months ago now that the creek broke or not on the creek? Did that all blow, I mean, they got the road built, which I guess we need to look at what we're gonna do there or something out there, up with that sidewalk.
Well, when, when.
Would he have to do that?
When he, why he was, you're talking about what he brought to, but when he left and went to another school.
Well, I had asked his wife up at work on the day, and she said she didn't know, she said he's never been there.
Now, he dropped.
She never knows when he's gonna be home for supper or.
Yeah, whenever he changed schools, then, then that includes, and there's something to be pursued.
I wish we could still do something like that on the city park or something like that, though. This is a follow-up, maybe we're telling, it's the light, that'd be harder to put it together.
It's, there's been so much going on, there's been a lot going on, so, you're looking at Tucker Creek coming up in October.
You got three.
Two.
Three.
You know, we got, uh, Marketplace Saturday, then we can get a movie night in, and then we've got Tucker Creek in October, we've got Christmas on the Square coming up, so.
What's called the actor director?
You know, no.
Dag, but no, we, no, no, I got some.
Tell them I'm here.
We ain't gonna blow that all down, that's pretty sad.
What you done, Mayor? It's your turn now.
Um, yeah, I've done some of my show, I guess, now I was just gonna say, we're gonna have Marketplace and talk about when we wanna have another movie night. If we wanna look at a band, if we wanna look at doing a movie night, so, and it's hard to get back, so, how many did we call? And that one that we can get, uh, before, you know, and that was a great turnout, we did a good job, but. I'm saying we probably should go back to a movie night, just, uh, do some good kids, you know, have everything on, I'm, I do that.
It's been nice for her to have something to go to that was common. Motion's done.
We need to try to find a movie, I guess, too, cause we showed Charlotte's way of the live stream, so, we'll see what we find. Okay, anybody, if nobody's got anything else, I need a motion to.
I thought maybe.
Second, second, all favor, I think you made it, the middle of this talking, any opposed?
I thought she was done, it seemed, I thought that's what she was asking for.
I see the middle is talking.